Welcome to the September Meeting House. I'm Hannah Stevens, Vice President for Programs. Our President Barry Was not here tonight. Sorry, but we have other good Board members here and we have a wonderful turnout for our school's time. Without further ado, I will start by introducing Asus Kamioke, Pack Leader for Pack 1209. We'll introduce the scouts who are going with flags that are on tonight. Asus.
Caragou, attention! Audience, please rise. Those that don't know the people, please place your right hand over your fur. Caragou, advance! Caragou, ready to cross. Please join me in the traditional readings. Ready, feet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience, please.
And we have also the two ladies that hold down the staff and the mayor's, uh, troop 49 and half staff and, uh, troop and troop 03. And we have over one more than the troop and troop 03. And totally nowadays, we have a four K. And we have the area of Perry, Akeem. And we have another, uh, the class ceremony, uh, group service and the American activity. And the patchwork, uh, and the troop 03. We are using that as well. And the troop 03. And, uh, and now, uh, the president is Matt Olling.
Matt Olling.
Caragou, attention!
But Tina, we're just gonna run it again?
Yes.
And now, okay, here. And, uh, we have people.
He said a good one.
Is this a sign?
Me? Jeff Stevens, our secretary, our Mr. Austin, what last name? Our second vice president, Jennifer Judas, is speaking in London today. So, uh, so he can be on like the bond network and stop and back table membership area. So if anybody needs to renew or wants to join us at the first time at the end of the meeting before the end, see you on that. We also have a president, we have a member of the combo, board member at large, John Murray, our treasurer. Uh, let's see now, I see Erin Hobbit in the back. And other board members. We have, uh, Tonsen, I'm sure Derek can't be here tonight. We, um, committee chair Jennifer Paulbag is in back. And we can't leave others, anybody whose name escaped me. I think that's the group here as far as board members go. We welcome you to the meeting. For town council members, the first item of business is to approve the minutes from our office meeting. They're posted on the website. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing them is our approval. And are there any first responders here tonight? Any booster fire for a big one? I don't see any, so we will get caught up with them next month. I don't know. That leads me to a very pleasant task of moving to our main program. It is school's time. And we love having our various principals. We've got some wonderful schools, wonderful principals. The first person I would call up, friend Rebecca, actually, who I believe in, frankly, I'm not just going to call up, send you to the unified school district board member Sabrina Lasso, but also our area superintendent for this area, Maria Gomez.
All right, good evening, everyone. And I have to say, this is my favorite, Miramasa Town Council. We need to be here because we need to brag about all our amazing schools here. I think I know most of you, but I'm the school trustee for District A. And also a long time president, as Mary said, well, my, uh, went to, uh, school right here in Miramasa. I was like a rag about how amazing our schools are here. And, uh, so tonight I need you to hear a little bit about each of our schools and all the amazing programs that they're doing. But, um, see, Miramasa is just really a leader within the district. Um, oftentimes at our board meetings, um, they're showing this, you know, kind of leaders and, uh, programs that we're doing. Other schools are kind of modeling and, uh, so, um, I'm, uh, really excited to be here and let you see what all, what all is going on. But first I'm gonna introduce our super superintendent, Maria Gomez. Uh, we work together pretty much all, in all the areas. So in addition to Miramasa, um, you know, Scripps Ranch, Clenrock, and Griddy Mesa. And yes, yeah, Clenrock. Clenrock is Madison. I'll let Maria talk for a minute and then we'll turn around to the schools.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, I'm so happy to be here today. And yes, also to celebrate the wonderful things that you can learn about our schools every week. I also was a former principal in May then. Miramasa, I was at Arizona Elementary School in 14. This is awful for my parents. Um, so love Miramasa is really near, near to my heart. And I have to tell you, it's one of my favorite clusters I've ever formed. And I tell them that all the time. Last year, we had a really good, um, turnout at our cluster meetings. You know, they're meant for the community, um, bring things that we feel that, that, um, benefit the entire Miramasa community. So it's not about one school, it's about what the Miramasa community might need. And I'm happy to say that over the summer, we met as a, we have a brand new board, all brand new board. And Miramasa, um, cluster, um, we come up with four areas that we want to present to various communities. So I'll just bring them out and I'll leave the flyer in the back in case anyone wants to, um, scan the meetings, the meeting dates. But we have four scandals, one this one. We're, um, we're inviting you to come out and learn about the new math curriculum that the district has launched this year. Um, and any, and the new website. So we're gonna cover like the math and the website because it's also changed. We're trying to make it a little bit more friendly and very specific to either the elementary middle or high school. And then we're also, um, making this specific to areas. So if you guys have difficulty to log on, click on Area A and find that, you will just get news from Area A. Um, in November, our meeting is gonna be about the new restorative discipline plan and the new cell phone policy that we're inviting you to learn a little bit more about. Our district just revamped the sort of discipline plan and improved it. And then also in January, we're gonna be talking a little bit about the four by four, uh, capping restructure of Miramasa. I know they had a, uh, initial meeting, um, last week. Um, and then we'll have met with staff and more parents hopefully, but we're gonna be presenting it to the community then. Uh, in March, we're gonna be talking transitions and elections. So I invite all of you to scan, all of you in the back. And you're welcome to join when we each are on two. And they are from 5:30 to six, uh, 5:30 to 6:30. And then prior to that, the PTA, every PTA from every school meets for about thirty minutes. And then from there, we assume our meeting. So, uh, it's a pleasure to be here and Maria Gomez. And Gomez, why did you ever get a hold of me? And, uh, um, like Sabrina said, we're really closely together. And I'm looking forward to seeing you hopefully at one of our cluster meetings where we're about making decisions.
Well, now it's time to transition to our.
If anyone wants to.
I think I would have invited any other board members who wanted to sit in the kind of row there where the principals are coming after Tom. Yeah, I guess you have to stay there like you're nervous of what we're discussing. The, uh, exactly. We have a new program.
We're, we're gonna do a lot of things this year. Yeah, we're gonna have all the classes this year.
Oh. Then I asked this staff, this staff's five years old. And I hadn't heard who was going to speak first. And the answer is we're all speaking. So we are getting it for that's a staff.
You're joining up there? You're a sorority scout or?
I don't know.
All right, well, welcome everybody. Uh, you've got my membership savings and questions over at Miramasa High School. Uh, this is my eleventh year this year as a principal over at Miramasa. Uh, and it is, honestly, it's been the honor of my life to be able to be over there and interact with community like this. I grew up here myself in Miramasa, uh, after a lot of the principals. Uh, unfortunately, when I went to buy my first house, Miramasa is very expensive, uh, so I was unable to afford some of the property values out there. So we moved out to Ramona. Uh, but we believe in so much about what we're doing in our community schools. Like we brought our kids into the cluster here. So they started with James and Hinge. My oldest daughter is now floating around with that challenger, uh, which is crazy because she was sent to, a little thing. Now she's in middle school and, you know, she'll be coming up to Miramasa High School. Uh, why we share that is Miramasa is really a true community school, right? Uh, Miramasa Cluster Schools has the highest retention rate of any cluster in our district for a reason. Right? Kids that start in Miramasa schools stay in Miramasa schools. Right? They don't opt out often to go to Cathedral or go to these other places. Do we do some on occasion? But by and marks, the most part of our, our kids that come to Miramasa are from the neighborhood and see the value in what we're doing all the way through the entire system.
And then they come back.
And then they come back. And then they graduate. And last year, they have to go visit elementary schools. And they're absolutely beautiful. Uh, so, so that's what I wanted to share with you is that we're, we're a pretty close knit team as well. So we're gonna do a lot of vertical alignment to make sure that what we're doing in our elementary school is supporting what we're doing in middle school. And then in high school, we're supporting the efforts that we've seen all the way through. You know, uh, we, uh, oftentimes get to read the, or, 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 or of all of their hard work, right? Because our kids come to us prepared. Our kids come to us excited about school and wanting to be connected to school. Um, there's a reason that we have A D clubs on campus. It's because they're used to participating in things like scouts, right? And things that, community sports and all of these other things. And when they come to the school, they wanna get involved and stay involved. And that's why the school is so successful, right? Like that's what makes it so special, right? It's unbelievable to think that, you know, we're graduating fifty percent of our senior class of over a three point five. And the reason that we're doing that is that have the foundation we needed when they went through elementary school and came in for middle school and even into high school. So not saying that we don't support our kids that, you know, come from Scripps Ranch and all these other places over here. We definitely do. Uh, but it's just really amazing to see kids come all the way through. How successful they are. So again, I just, you know, wanna thank my colleagues for all of their hard work, for what they're doing at their schools, for connecting kids to school and making kids really love school, right? When I picked up my oldest daughter, that challenger, from the first day of school, I was there, right, probably more than her. You know, when I dropped her off, I said, is it cool if I still walk you up to the front? You know, like, it's cool if you don't let me, but like, yeah, it's probably the last level, let me do that, you know? You can walk me up home, sweet, you know? So I got to do that and when she came up, she literally said, I would go back, right? Like she was so excited, I would go back to school, right? And this is a gift that is historically struggled in class. And so, you know, just that connectedness piece, I think, is so essential. And that's what our kids get here at Miramasa. So we're super excited about all that we have to offer this year, like about that vertical alignment and how we're gonna continue to connect with kids. You know, we bring over the eighth graders and have them tour the school. We're talking about doing that now with fifth graders and bringing them along to get them excited about staying in our cluster and being a part of what we have going on. So, uh, again, it makes our job very easy because of the hard work that they do providing the foundation and all of the things. And I could not do it, I'll be honest. Trying to teach my daughter how to read on Zoom, uh, was unbelievable. And James's teachers did that at a super high level, you know, and everybody. So again, uh, just wanted to say thank you to all of you for the support that you provide for our schools, uh, to our area superintendent and our board members that are always there for us when we need things, uh, even though we have a lot of needs, right? Me as a teacher, but they're there to support us and all that stuff. Uh, and, and all of those things are super key pieces. But the most important part is the foundation makes you all everybody, right? I mean, when we have open houses, you see the numbers of people that show up. Like, that's the reason of the solos, right? It's because you're super involved with your kids. You care, they're gonna fight, and all these people are gonna fight us now. So that's, that's kind of slide one and two.
Yep.
Slide one and two. All right.
So my name is Erica Clarkson. I'm the principal at Jonesaw Elementary. And, um, what I want you to know about me is I belong in Miramasa. And it's our role as a, as a school, as a cluster, to make sure that all of our kids feel like they belong. We treat them with equity and that they are thriving. And when they leave our schools, that's what we want. Um, I'm probably the, I think I'm the oldest. I am the oldest. I've been in Miramasa since I was thirteen years old. So I was born, I was raised to be a Miramasa, Miramazing. I was raised to be Miramazing. And graduated from the high school, left for a minute, came back. There's no place like Miramasa. You hear there's no place like that? There's no place like Miramasa. In Miramasa, we have, we have quality schools, quality neighborhood schools, and they're all fantastic, all of the schools. We have fantastic parents because our parents know how important education is and really support us and are very helpful in terms of helping their children and supporting our schools. And so we love being in Miramasa, speaking for all of us. Um, what we teach, we teach, we align our, uh, curriculum to the California State Standards, which means that regardless of what school your child goes to, they are learning the Cal, based on the California State Standards. We all have really high expectations and common programs. But the most important thing and one of the things that I absolutely love about Miramasa is as leaders, we all work together. We are there to support one another, even on Sunday. And, um, when we have a problem, we're right there to support each other and help each other and share with each other. So there are too many communities that embody the things that we have. So Miramasa is Miramazing.
Um, good evening, I'm Jessie Harrison, principal at Mesa Elementary. This is my eighth year at Miramasa. And I just said to Jennifer this morning, because he was, or after he was mentioning his daughter was a challenger, and I was like, wait, no, she was just kindergarten age. Uh, and that's how pastime flies when we find a community that we love and a community that we don't want to lose. And I happened upon Miramasa just by chance, but I think it was also by the grace of the God that we're here. And I have never experienced, and probably the twenty-five years of education, my community like this. Uh, I tell people all the time, we love our kids, we love our parents, we love our community. Each of our schools, each unique entity, we also all move together. Uh, one of the neatest things in talking about establishing a foundation is our TK program. We have just three-year-olds that just turned four. And some four-year-olds are turning five in our TK programs. But we're really building that foundation of playing social, emotional learning, early collaboration. And it's so neat to have two teachers in our classrooms. They're working on, um, being legal, working on planning, supporting twenty of our youngest learners. But then they, well, and we watch them, and many of us have had a chance to watch our children, our students grow up from kindergarten to TK all the way through, um, our elementary schools. And then they head off to our middle and high. Last year, my son, we don't live in the area, but he played little school sports. And I got to come up and go to play football games. We see all my kids from Mesa, but on the way up and the challenge track. It was really cool to, to be a part of this community, uh, celebrating all of our work that our kids have done. And really enjoy, um, to share our students' foundation with each other and with our middle-class schools. So we're gonna take a really quick second to give you a few fun facts about each of our schools. And then we're gonna share a little bit about our elementary alignment.
Okay. Let's speak more in the middle. That's what's possible. Hello. I'm Gina Dean, and I am actually the new principal in our community here at Higman Elementary. Um, so just a little bit about me being, and I just wanna say just first and foremost, this is my first meeting. And, um, everything that's been said so far from our leaders here has been absolutely true. And I actually came right here by chance. I landed here with purpose, um, and intention with being here because I just heard so much amazing things about this community. And I, and I saw this position, I wanted to be a part of it. And now that I am officially here, I can't express enough how much they've all embraced me, um, from baby one. So this is definitely where I'm meant to be and I'm very happy to be here. So also, uh, with, uh, Higman Elementary, apparently I'm the smallest school in the community. Uh, we have four hundred and forty-seven as of today of our students with eighteen classrooms. Uh, and we have a teaching staff members, that's also the, all our doctors, a lot of teachers, our U C teachers, actual staff. Uh, with military, we do serve sixteen, um, families that are current military. Uh, also bilingual learners, forty-nine. Uh, and, uh, students with I D Ps as states, sixteen, uh, in the mouth. Uh, and we cannot have these at that school.
Can you say what I D P is? What?
Yes, so I D P is like the Intervisualized Education Plan for students that are identified with special services and needs of learning disabilities. So we provide those services to those students that qualify. And that was Higman Elementary's next to Jonesaw.
And back in season. Um, who cares? I don't know who it was. Um, at Jonesaw, we, we are one of the largest, um, elementary schools in Miramasa. We have about seven hundred and seventy students. We are definitely at capacity, at capacity. Um, we have thirty-two classrooms, about ninety staff members. Thirty students are, um, from military families and are multilingual learners, we have a hundred and fifteen. And our students with different abilities, we have about eighty-eight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Wong. I have a privilege of representing Erickson Elementary as a resident principal. Uh, this is my fourth year, but I am a resident of the race. It's a group in the sense of age, I'm five and nine in Miramasa. And I, um, and I'm here as well as my colleagues. And so we're, we're a multi代代代代代代 Uh, for Erickson Elementary, we are around seven hundred and eight. If give or take, it's not actually more. We are pretty much at capacity. We might be able to take in one or two, a few more kinder friends, but that's pretty much all the kids do. Um, we have twenty classrooms, eighty-nine staff members, our classified staff. Thirty-one military students, ninety-five multilingual learners, and then a hundred and fifteen, um, students with I D Ps. So they are by the law, E S N and Warmark students.
Good evening, everybody. I'm James Linger, it's Volcade Elementary. Shout out to everybody online. Um, as you can see here, five hundred and thirteen students. Oh, yeah, uh, twenty-two classrooms, sixty-two staff members, including all nineteen of our folks. Thirty-seven military-connected families that we do, that we serve. Uh, eighty-seven multilingual learners. And a hundred and five total students with disabilities that we serve as well. So super duper excited to be here. Uh, we can talk all day, but Miramasa through through Erickson Elementary, Wackenham's Junior High, before we became the middle school and then we were at Higman High School, was at Piermar College, all, all that jazz. My parents have just visited, they're in the state late today. Um, and so we visited, they, they, I find Erickson Elementary so often. So if you wanna say hi, this is, this is the leaves right there. Thank you.
I'm Jessie Harrison, back, uh, classroom school Mesa Elementary. We have five hundred and twenty-two students, T K, three, three, five, um, being, uh, I'm here in a, one of my numbers. Uh, that's a big one. Eighty is not three, might not be three, five, so we're in the same seat. Anyways, we're military-connected, Masons serve, we have about two hundred and fifty-seven military-connected students. So being our main school that supports our military, we're pretty fortunate. We have, oh.
Two thirty-seven.
Two thirty-seven. I would have said the next one, two hundred and thirty-seven military-connected students. Oh, sorry, I'm trying to believe who we're gonna, we need to X all the board. We're pretty fortunate to be able to support all of our families that come from all over the country and different places that they've lived in and experienced in the world. With that said, we already know, I think I have six students starting next week. So we have a lot of students that come in Miramasa because we have control when our families come in and when our families leave. But one of the best things is that our office and our school community is always very welcome and support and take care of all of our students with all of the richness they bring with them and their families too. Um, we have twenty-two classrooms, about sixty staff members. We also are very fortunate to have, Eric, what's the correct number? I think it's a hundred and two. Or multilingual learners?
Oh, well done. Uh, you have one hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty-one multilingual learners as of today with our great, great most recent Elka. Um, and then we have sixty-eight students who also have I D Ps. And we have a live water program, so we could like support in the classroom for our students so that they're having access to the general education curriculum as well as getting additional support in the classroom. Uh, can I have a military, it just sounds like? Two thirty-seven.
Forty-five percent.
Yes, forty-five percent.
And I'm next, Blintzy Brantman, principal at Sandberg Elementary. It is now my sixth year as principal at Sandberg and now my third year as a Miramasa resident. Um, and a parent of a Miramasa student. So my son, Shiker, is a second grader at Sol Elementary, which is our neighborhood school, and will be a future challenger student and Miramasa high school student. So I'm so glad that Eric and Jac are there to take him under. We, it might not be easy, but it'll be fun. Um, we now at Sandberg have five hundred and eighty-five students, which is our highest enrollment since fall opened about ten years ago. Um, so in those five hundred and eighty-five students, we have four TK classes. We are one of the overfull schools, so when other schools don't have space for all of those students in both, um, TK and E S N, um, we have three E S N classrooms to support our students with expensive support needs. Um, and in addition to that, we have twenty-five, um, classrooms, which include our TK through fifth grade and our E S N classrooms. We have twenty-four military, um, students that we support, sixty-three multilingual learners, and as I can just, you mentioned, still testing. We have a few more, a few more days for that. And then a hundred and one of our students, our students with I D Ps, um, for involve our mild pot program as well as our expensive support program. And our last one, Walter.
Brittany Anne Regina, so I'm the principal of Walter Elementary. And I can tell you, we say all the way from home in Miramasa. I am originally from Brazil. And I am super appreciative of my colleagues embracing me and supporting me, but also honoring me because they embrace me as well. So today, a lot of, we have, you know, eighty-four students. I told you this on my staff because of today, but why we put this together? Fifty-two students, um, in our childhood programs. We have seventeen classrooms, sixty-two staff members. We have seventeen classrooms, sixty-two staff members, twenty-three students with interior dimensions, a hundred and twelve all-day-to-day students right there, thanks for that. Fifty-five fostered students, and seventy students who are pregnant with both MyoPod and ESNs. Thank you.
Foster and PCT, those are two terms together. What are foster and PCT?
Foster. PCT, for any child with education, for any child with... For divisions for three years of age, my life is like a younger, less advanced folder who goes to, we have state physical, and we have the past, and we have the current. So we do the work, but I think that's our service.
You think of foster?
Foster, we have additional facilities, we have system for one, that's a lot of the best in all this, or the best that I can remove from the context of the case. Is it not, I think?
I would say we all have different percentages of foster youth. I think a lot is when we read our slides, we look at what is, who did that, or what year?
Just because we get such a difference because of the numbers, it's a difference of all the operations of the stuff that is kept at the forefront of the world. But you know, for everyone, everyone, just sure that everyone has some, but not in the same amount. Or this is everyone.
So are there special requirements for them?
There are specifics, especially, so this is the, the details. Thank you. So with me, again, please synergize. What that means is that all of our elementary schools are in part of the very union. And there's no place for hate. We believe in unity also. And as a part of the very union, there's no hate. We practice that in ways synergizing. We really work together, we are much together than we believe, right? And we're going to be a team, not only to support our students, but to support each other, which is really special, all of us, and actually. Also, we can even call it collective. And we believe that teamwork raises not only workers, but also leaders. Thank you.
And then also, as this bonus mentioned, is wanting to be highlighted as the first Mira Mesa classroom school to be. This year, we have a new elementary math program, which is the Eureka Math Square, again, to curriculum, and it's for transitional kindergarten through fifth grade. The nice thing is, is this is the first year in a while, but we have one math program that all of our elementary schools are doing. In the past, we've had different programs that different schools have tried on, based on the needs of their community. But this year, all seven of our elementary schools are doing the Eureka Math Square program. The great thing about this program is that it's really focused on building strong math foundations, as well as problem-solving students. So not just being able to get the answer, but understanding how you got there and being able to apply that knowledge to many different problems, whether it's real-world problems, and working together as a team. So we talked about that on the last slide, not just the adults in our community, but also our students, teaching them how to collaborate, to talk, to communicate, and to work together to solve math problems. So it's a really exciting opportunity this year where all seven of our schools are all trying on this new program. I can say as a parent, it is a learning curve. My son's school last year in first grade, they actually piloted the program. I truly enjoyed it as a parent because there are a lot of parent components to it that also help parents to understand what people sometimes call new math. It's not how we used to solve math problems. There's a lot more talking and communication and problem-solving as part of it. But it's been a great opportunity, I think, for all of my own son, but our students to really get that strong math foundation as they prepare for the whole school.
I have a question about that.
Yes!
Are you using that in your junior school too?
No, we're using an elementary TK through fifth grade. Yeah.
So how does that transition, and I know this is your first year, so you said you're fifth graders. How is that going to transition into what they're?
So as I mentioned previously, the math program is focused on the California Common Core standards. And so no matter what math program you're using, it is based on those standards, which as they go through TK through fifth grade, they master those standards they need to then be prepared for sixth grade and the math that they'll have in sixth grade. So even though it might be a different publisher, it's all focused on the California Common Core standards.
Okay, good question.
No, but that's a, as a cluster meeting, they will be talking more about the program and the different components of the program.
And then that's the way, yeah.
Say, would this be written math program, or is it different from other math programs?
So it's a different publisher, so a different company that created the program. But one of the reasons why the program was selected were those key things that I talked about, that is really focused on building that mathematical foundation, as well as a problem-solving component. Not just being able to come up with an answer, but being able to use your math thinking to solve problems. No matter what the problem may be, you have that foundation, as well as the communication piece of not just knowing the answer is ten, but being able to communicate, coming to talk to that, which try to be used.
And the parent component?
The parent component is huge. I will say that as a parent, when the math book comes home, if I don't necessarily know what to do, there's a whole parent learning piece as part of it that shows me exactly how he learned it at school, how he was taught at school, so that I can also form my own.
Thank you.
So as we've been telling you, we have such a high retention in various other schools because of this whole, this is on the whole child. I can attest to it myself because my son is also attending Erickson Elementary, and he's been, well, he first started at TK, and actually for kindergarten, but then when I started working at Erickson, he came with me. And I can attest that it is focused on the whole child. And when we, when we talk about the whole child, this is not necessarily a unique way to be raised, but in general, just in your unified school, through schools, each elementary school has equal, at least equal type of content. Now, some of our schools, because we are larger in number, we may have an additional allocation of another counselor for our, for another day or two, whatever it may be. So in this case here, for example, at Erickson, we do have a full-time counselor, but we also have one more counselor that comes in digital one day. Another aspect is that we do focus on physical aspects, so keeping our children healthy through what we call sharpening the sauce, part of the leader in the program. And so physical education movement to brain-grade, always really important to our children. Visual performing arts, all of our schools have visual performing arts for TK through third, and then our fourth and fifth graders have, none of our visual, sorry, our performing arts, which is focused on orchestral band, and then, that's music. And then we do a lot of collaborative planning and data and form interventions, which leads us to be able to make decisions that are very focused on the whole child and what that child needs. And we look at it from the perspective of, let's say, the community, the family. So then when we do make decisions, we're making decisions not just as school administrators, but we're also thinking of it as, if this was my whole, this living Mira Mesa school, what would I want to? So we're also focused in that aspect of the rest of the management of our decisions.
All right, and here to talk about volunteer or volatile opportunities. But a lot of different ways to engage with our schools, so we really love, hopefully it comes to our campuses, different examples, classroom support, so you can be in the classroom, you're working alongside groups of students. Field trips, very important. I know as a father, I was really bad about that, going on field trips for a very long time. Because I was blessed to serve other people's families and be able to welcome them into my campus. And I was like, I'm busy, I can't do that. And then I had to reshoot. My kids are growing, and they were, it would be at one point in their life, they're like, oh, I want to be around you. And so I took advantage of that, and it's really fantastic. So we do recommend that you go on field trips with your students. If you're going to be alone with kids, that's the last part that you need to fingerprint it. And so that's a definite, definite thing that you want to note, that you're going to be alone with students at any time, other than your own kids, right? Homeage projects, so if you have time, you can't come into campus, maybe you can prep some things, cut some things out to help out, that's another way to engage with our school. Come to school-wide events. I know here is a family movie night coming up this Friday, so we're excited, we're showing a Minecraft movie. So come on over to the event, build a community that we really appreciate. And then joining our different organizations, whether it's a PTA, a PTO, or a foundation, those are all huge supports for our students, one hundred percent. So volunteer, the volatile, come on down.
The fingerprint someone or is it the background check as well?
Right, just a background check. All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Sullivan, principal at Challenger Elementary. And I'm Dr. Val, the twelve, Wyegan High School. I've been a teacher since I... Are we on ours together? Yeah. Mr. Sullivan's going to present, and I'm going to be the man over. Any questions? Challenger Elementary, we have a hundred and fifty students, we have about eighty-five staff members. We have about twenty-four military families, so that's thirty percent of our population. Fifty-one multilingual learners, about five percent. We have one hundred and fifty-two students with IEPs, twenty-two of them are ESN students, that means they're, they separate the class, we have two classes for that.
And over Wyegan, we have about seven hundred and eleven, plus minus two. Both around seventy-two staff. We have a large percentage of military families. Most of Mason families come to Wyegan, and so we are the designated middle school for families in the neighborhood, special families in the past days. We have one hundred and fourteen multilingual learners, one hundred and forty-nine students with IEPs. That number has increased, so we've increased our staff and our programming opportunities. Including opening a new ESN classroom this year. We had one a few years ago, but due to lower movement, it closed. But the need of the community justified us to reopen it, so we're all in your shoes, starting at our campus.
So a lot of the stuff that you heard today is what we do here at the middle school level, where we want to get our students to have as much success as they can in the high school, so prepare them when they walk in through our first and sixth grade, and even their running, or having a break into the high school. And that comes with a lot of vertical alignment with the high school. So what we want to do is we want to make sure that we have the same class offerings or we want to possible to the high school. So we want to make sure that they're engineering. I know Wyegan High has some other elective classes that we need to success at the high school level. We also know that intervention classes aren't needed because sometimes we do our students who aren't making as much success as we would like. So we need to offer them something to help them catch up, and what we do is intervention classes. So we have a sixth grade, we, us at the, both middle schools have intervention classes that help support those students getting actual support in the classroom, in their core classes, like English and math, as well as getting their skills along the way. So it's a twofold, kind of like a touring situation, but also an opportunity for them to get those skill levels up. Our choice, we want to make sure that our students feel like they want to be part of the school, they want to come to the school, they want the ability to pick what classes they want, because we know that high interest leads to more success. So one of the things we do is we build our master schedule around students and what their needs are. Probably choices over the next slide. Okay, like the elementary school said, we want to make sure that we incorporate a full child. So as you probably know, because you can think about your time in middle school, is that social-emotional learning, that your homes are going crazy, you're pushing your parents away, you're funding new friends. And this is an opportunity for us at the middle school level to offer that chance to express yourself, to have an opportunity to talk to a counselor, to learn how to math, because sometimes students come to our school and they need to be reminded of how it is to be a successful, what a successful student looks like. So we do that for advisory, both of our schools have advisory, where it's just meant to support the students' social-emotional learning. That's our time, and so it's not brought into science classes or English classes. It's their time, the teachers get a script as far as what they want to do with that curriculum, and then they use that time, we have whole school activities, and then both of us have a wellness center on campus, and Ms. Hope Mitchell is the one that runs the wellness center, and she's located over on campus, so she splits time between us. School involved, and we have seen both at the high school and middle school, that our schools are involved, they're going to be more successful. So if they're telling the school, and just through the sixth period days of leaving, they're not going to be as successful if they find a club, or sports, or join ASB, something that ties them back into the school. So one cool thing is it's thirty years since we packed sports at the middle school level. So it's the fall, so we have track and field, and we have basketball. Boys and girls, they're going to go track and field. The first contests are the scatting. We don't know anything about the scatting yet, but we always find success. It's fun when Challenger's back and they play against each other. And sometimes with our wrestling teams, we have one wrestling team, and we have a professional competition every single year. So I think it's nine of the clubs on the... And then the other thing we offer is high school credits. We offer foreign language credits, as well as IAM one, so we can set our students up again for success. Another thing that really comes to play here is, you know, kids are maybe first introduced to sports or to music or something like that, and they get good for the, you know, they get better and better every year. And if they get to the high school, they're winning awards, they're winning setup championships. You know, they're finding that success that we all want from our students is because of the hard work, because of the dedication that all of you have, and the pride that we take in our schools at Mira Mesa.
Just a couple add-ons, we didn't spend any time introducing ourselves, we are a junior. So one fun fact about both, this is all of myself, is we both professionally came from Wyegan High School. Started as teachers, became admin, and then ended up at both the feeder middle schools. So we were both positioned really uniquely to understand what the middle school students need to be preparing for in high school. And we maintain close relationships with the high school program, which is why in our schedules, there's been some shifts, as Mr. Sullivan said, that is the student needs. So for example, Challenger has more offerings, global language, because we offer Spanish and Tadala. Whereas at Wyegan, we only have Spanish, but we have more offerings in the career technical education. We have a full workshop, middle shop, which feeds into a couple of different opportunities for the high school. And then we had a computer teacher just retired, and so we now are bringing in a full-time hospitality culinary program, which is really exciting, because Mira Mesa has a phenomenal program. And when we run the classes in the past, we couldn't do it full-time, but anytime we could do it, it was a huge success, and the kids and the families would celebrate it. So it's exciting to bring that back. But so there are some subtle differences, but between the two middle schools, we are really comparing everything that your kids could potentially need to know or be exposed to in preparation for that. Other than that...
I think there's a lot to say of the relationship that I have. I don't make decisions without talking to math, seeing what is... It's like, again, we know, bottom line is, we want all of our kids to find some type of success here at high school. So what we do matters, and what major matters to us, because we're actually going to be in the same spot each other, with each other for three years, so that matters a lot.
And to God, that is really just a reflection of how the community views the schools in Mira Mesa. I've had the pleasure of serving this community for a long time. This is my fifteenth year at Wyegan High. Prior to that, I was at Mira Mesa High School for eleven years, as a teacher, counselor, and student principal. And so I realized that the families see Mira Mesa schools as almost its own little mini K-12 system. And there isn't a lot of recognition, there doesn't want to be a lot of recognition between this side of Mira Mesa or that side of Mira Mesa, they're just, it's just Mira Mesa. And way back in the day, when some of you were all these students, there was a lot of competition between the two middle schools. There was a lot of like slanging each other and rivalry, and it wasn't nothing, it wasn't productive. And so we worked really hard to make sure that we are working in unison to serve Mira Mesa and the students, because it's only in that unison that we're really being most successful in the place. And so that's why I was just all the same. Whenever there's innovation or think policy changes, we work together to make sure that we're able to do that together consistently and stability.
we work together to make sure that we're able to do that together consistently and steadily.
Next time you go to high school.
Off to high school. Alright, so Meremesa High School, we're sitting at about 3200 students. We are not at capacity. We like to be sit around 2400, like 2450 is kind of our school spot. And 24 of y'all are watching for fall, or utilizing our space to its full capacity. So we do have very good, we're excited about that. We have about 223 staff members on campus, and the physical campus is growing. So you may have seen the construction over there at Meremesa High School. We are super excited to say that the building is gonna be open for the second semester this year. And so we were looking to do a groundbreaking ceremony on December 18. So I gotta invite you all, and I know that they're still coordinating with your offices to see if we can make that date happen. So once we finalize that, we'll send that out, but we are hopeful. We're able to have a full plan going before we have in the winter break, because coming back from winter break, we're gonna have classes running in the new building. 17 classrooms up top for Meremesa High School students. The campus is now gonna be set up to kind of mirror what a college campus looks like. So our 200 building will be primarily our science classrooms. We have math classrooms in the 700 building. All of our 400 classrooms are CTE programs, arts programs, all located in that building. The top floor of the 600 and the top floor of the new building will be our humanities classes. The lower floor will be all of our rare mark college corporations, and so they'll have their own session, and then our main office becomes the world language building. We have been under construction ever since I met at Meremesa, since 12 years we've been under construction. We have probably 10 years to go of construction. I hope to be there for a big 15. We'll have to until I have the ability to retire. I hope to spend my entirety of my career at Meremesa High School. As long as you guys will have me anyway, that's all I'll do. But when we get done with this project, and we build the world language classroom, the new, what is our new, our office building right now, we're getting rid of all those bungalows, finally. Some of those bungalows that exist on campus, I know. 1944. We have a bungalow from the Second World War. It is insane, right? We asked, hey, what's the average lifespan of a bungalow that's been up 40 years? I said, well, I did four. I didn't win that right now. So we're super excited for what that's gonna bring. A lot of changes though, right? Like when we physically change the campus like that, we need to think about like passing periods and all those things, right? Because now if you're in that huge building, and you actually go inside, it's massive. So if you're in the back of that building, and then you have to go to the band room, can you really hang in there in seven minutes? I can't. You know, I'm not the best, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to get there on time. Right? So we're gonna look at all of those things. So as we change the physical campus, we also want to change how we serve kids. And one of the major changes that we're gonna be experiencing in Meremesa is a shift in the message that we've been providing to kids, right? We do a very, very good job preparing kids for college, right? But I feel like our message has been over the years, that is the only path rates of success. Right? We know that's a valid issue, right? So when folks ask me this year, they said, what are you working on? I said, we're trying to get work, right? And they're like, what is that? I said, well, why didn't the path of success? Right? We're gonna teach kids that there are multiple avenues that they can go down to find successful careers, not jobs, careers. Right? I had the pleasure of meeting with a student about three and a half years ago. I gotta be honest, I didn't even know that this was an impactful conversation with this gentleman. Right? We've been with his counselor, he said, I wanna be an electrician. They said, dude, you gotta go talk to Sabans. Head over there, just randomly popped in, my door was open, he's like, hey, can I talk? I said, come on in, I love to talk. So he comes in and sits down, we start having our conversation about what he wants to do. He said, I wanna be an electrician. I said, hey, I just happened to walk into the organization called the Association of Builders and Contractors. They have an electrician's program over there, right? The number one thing that they wanna know is, are you dependable? Are you gonna show up on time? Right? Are you gonna be here every day? Because if you commit to being there every day, they're gonna put you in a training program. But it's gonna take you three years, but as you start the program, it would be $33 an hour starting. When you finish the program, it's gonna be $70 an hour. It's 21 years old. Right? Three benefits, $70 an hour. Like that's, that's a very compelling job, right? Like, I didn't see that until I hit the person. Those kinds of things. But our kids don't even know these things exist. I happened to be standing in Pumbevo, and a kid walked past me, and he goes, hey Sabans? And I was like, hey, what's up man? I hardly recognized him, because he's huge, and he's got a full beard. And he goes, man, I'll let you know, I'm almost finishing this training program. I happened to be standing there with one of my principals from Morris High School, and the guy goes, did you set that whole thing? I'm like, did you plan that thing? Because this kid goes, man, that conversation like changed my life. And I'm sitting there in a panic, because I'm going, what a conversation. I can't remember having this conversation with this guy. It wasn't until he told me, like, hey, remember we came in and talked about that electrician's program? That's just one example, right? We have eight different CTE pathways at Meremesa High School. The sports bent pathway has blown up and is unbelievable. Our athletic trainer, who does a doctorate in sports medicine, is teaching those classes now. Kids get a rare mark college credit for taking those classes. Like, we want kids to know that if college is not their path, that doesn't mean that they're gonna be unsuccessful, right? It means that we have to figure out what is a path that you're looking to get on, and how do we support that? To that effort, we hired a instructional coordinator this year. They sold him a brand back, he was my head counselor at Meremesa, and he's an amazing human being. He was Cathedral's main counselor, in charge of like getting kids to college. So they sent him out to all these different universities, he was kind of the face mail, building the contacts. So we hired him specifically to do that same thing, but for the trades, right? For different career pathways that exist in Meremesa. So we're working with them right now in UCSB to set up pre-apprenticeship programs, and really like internship programs, so that students, as they go to Meremesa High School, have that ability again to do that. And one of the reasons that we're doing that is we have been stressing our kids out. I have a group of kids that have come through Meremesa High School recently, I'm attending some portal stats. These are some good stats, here's some bad stats, right? Average GPA to get into San Diego State last year was over a 4.0. Like, over a 4.0 to get into San Diego State. I'm telling you right now, when I went to San Diego State in 1998, it was a 2.0 to get into San Diego State. If you got a 2.2, guaranteed you'd get into San Diego State, right? Not, not with, aspect of all this stuff, but I'm excited about that. But that was a fallback for many kids. Right? I would say kind of a scary stat, last year, the two valedictorians, right? 4.95 GPAs were the valedictorians at high school. The only reason they didn't have a 5.0 was out of honor roll in E class. Right? So some of the kids were like, you should think about being in that class. But kids are competitive. I don't think that kids need a 5.0. But the unfortunate reality is that if you have a student out there that says, I wanna go to UCLA, like, a lot of times to gain entry to these schools, you're looking at 4.7s and up. You know, if you wanna look up at SAS statistics, look at how many valedictorians were not included in this year's entry class from UCLA. It's unbelievable to see that. And so why I share that information is that oftentimes we push that as this is the only, this is the only way you can be successful. So whatever our kids do, they kill themselves to do that, right? They take zero period PD, zero period, our kids in zero period band, that then have six AP level or college level classes, and then they're playing football after school, but they're also in the bands on Thursday nights after football practice, they go to the band rehearsal at night, right? Rachel knows exactly what time, right? Like, that's an incredible way for students to start at 7:15 in the morning and not pick up until 10 o'clock. Like, I believe that is too much pressure to be putting on against to be successful. So what we're looking at next year is how do we systematically change the way we organize our programs, so the kids can still take all the ABs they wanna take, but they're not gonna kill themselves doing that. And the way that we do that is by looking at this 4x4 scope, right? There's a lot of trouble with it, it can be very difficult, right? Kids sitting in a class for 85 minutes, that's terrifying. For me, as a parent of a student that has an IEP, terrifying that Sydney's gonna sit in that class for 85 minutes. Right? That's a long time. If we don't teach differently in those classes, if we don't approach that differently, this is going to be horrific, right? But if our teachers dedicate their time this year to planning for it, and we're able to break those things up, then next year, when Sydney, or she won't be there in a few years, but when she jumps in eventually at Meremesa High School, instead of taking six classes at a time, she's only taking five. And if two of those classes are electric classes, she's really only focused for like difficult classes, on two classes. And for a student with an IEP, that's a game changer, right? To not have to manage six, seven different classes at once. So we're going through quite a bit of change, right? Both physical and really the structure of how Meremesa High School operates. And it's scary. I'm just gonna tell you honestly, you know, we had 250 parents join us appearing because going from a traditional six period day to a format for does present a lot of challenges. Even for the arts and things like that. But in my opinion, this is a light move for kids, right? To be able to support our kids and still allow them to do all the fun things they want. So that's kind of the scary stats, because they're going through a lot of change in Meremesa. But I think that we're doing it the right way. And I think our teachers are approaching it the right way. We've got a teacher today that talked about the 4x4. They asked some great questions, and they were open to the ideas that was up. It wasn't like a huge fight. So there's a lot of things that are coming up, and a lot of changes are happening at Meremesa. But we're still gonna all come stuff too, right? Football team is 3-0 right now, we're super excited about that. Last year, we lost 10 to 12, Ryanheim's. This year, the kids aren't gonna get back on there. But we lost 17 staff members, right? 17 staff members took our retirement incentive last year, and are sending me pictures from all over the world. I want to go into work and all that fun stuff. But it's, so it's an exciting time to be changing. But Jean Christensen is all over with us, a band director. She was there for 35 years at Meremesa High School. She set an unbelievable standard of excellence in our visa program. We got Brendan Lockey in there now, he is amazing. Like, those programs are flourishing, our RO program. We haven't changed entirely, from air force to a brand new army unit, right? That was a monstrous change. Kids were really like sticker shocked, well, why are we doing this? And all these kinds of things, but the two instructors over here on are fantastic. They're gonna continue to support, you know, have holiday for the next LDU, all the events at the elementary schools. So that's the goal this year, guys. We're gonna kind of wind up the success, we got lots of fun stuff. I love the culinary programs, right? I gotta tell you, I can tell you one like cool fun story. They some scientists, they're gonna say, tell me about this. So we started with, we started this barbecue club at Meremesa, right? And that's the kids that go in, they're like, we do a barbecue club. We always say, if you wanna do something, just ask, we'll make it happen. Right? This one was a little bit bigger, ask. I love barbecue, I don't know if you can tell. So, so these kids were like, we need a competitive smoker, we need to do all this stuff. So at the traditional state of California, we got funding from the state to buy a 250 gallon trailer smoker, all this fun stuff, right? We had to go through unbelievable craziness to get these things approved, right? Because you gotta go through, folks have their whole job is to minimize risk, right? And then they say, we're gonna have kids with high flyers, it's gonna be awesome. Like, the risk is gonna be pleased, and you know, like, it's all part of the stuff, right? But again, like, in our culinary program, we have kids that operate hot oil flyers, pizza ones that burn at 950 degrees, right? The culinary program is a legit program. The amount of money that has been invested, like, all of you into those programs is immense, right? And when we read it, the transportation, uh, room at Meremesa, that's about 14 new lifts, all kinds of stuff, that's a $4 million improvement there. Culinary Center was 10 years ago, but that was $4 million 10 years ago. To get that thing out the money, it's pretty amazing. So again, the kids started this barbecue club, and their stuff is like legit, right? So then all of a sudden, they're like, we start selling at lunch? Like, yeah, let's sell lunch, we'll see what we can do. They raised so much money for their barbecue club, that they were able to, I don't know, like buy all the swag, right? They have shirts on the back that has a smoker, and said, the hottest club on campus. But they're making their own rooms and selling them, and they're doing all these things. And then they're going out and hosting these events, right? And now they're selling at lunch. They raised so much money that last summer, we were able to make a decision whether to take them to Austin, and learn to get better by visiting all these like unbelievable barbecue restaurants and stuff like that in Austin, also visit University of Texas and Texas A&amp;M. Or we're like, we wanna go to Missouri and compete for a national championship. We joined the National High School Barbecue Association, right? So we're the first team from California to do that, so the kids are all excited. But again, this is all from kids just going, we're interested in this, and we make this thing work. So they go, we wanna go to Texas, like, let's get better, right? So we contacted all these places out in Texas, and every single one was like, okay, bring in a bunch of kids. Like, we got you. We went to two Michelin star restaurants. Like, I'm not super good, I've never been to a Michelin restaurant in my life. We went to two with the kids in Texas. And the cool part about this is that the kids paid nothing to go on the trip, right? Everything was fundraised by the students, and they were able to pay their own way on the trip. I think we almost have more adults for chaperones. Even Mr. Sullivan, he's nice. So, and, and yes, yes, adults pay their own way. Like, adults do not go on student card. But just getting that opportunity to go and do those kinds of things. I mean, you know, we were with Michelin star chefs that were taking two hours with the kids. You know, one barbecue, and we went and did like a brisket trimming demonstration. She had like all the kids pick up the briskets, and like, see that jerk, what's she want? Because, I feel it, you know? They were getting super into it, and why I say all this stuff is, that stuff is interesting and fun, but it also plays into exactly what we're hoping out of these things from the CTE programs, because the kids are coming back, and they're doing cost analysis to determine, is it cheaper if we go with a Kirkland bun? Or is it cheaper if we go with a wine? Right? Because they're a little bit smaller, a little proportion sizes and all these things. And the kids are looking at it really from that entrepreneurial lens, and saying, if I wanna start my own business, is this a viable business? You know, I will say they were a little bit, a little bit elevated by the guy at Snow's Barbecue. He's on Netflix, he owns Netflix. He opened up specifically for us coming there, because it wasn't even open that day. And he was like, I'll come and do a special thing for you guys. But he told the kids, hey, we're only open on Saturday. We cook on Thursday, we slice and serve on Saturday. And last year, I made over $3 million selling barbecue. We're only open Monday. Now, they were in Texas, they were the best barbecue in Texas, and they're on Netflix, right? So they had a line to serve for me at midnight, right? And they start slicing and serving at 7:30 in the morning. I go, people are eating brisket at 7:30 in the morning? No, like, absolutely, but my people, that's awesome. But, you know, the kids are looking at that money, yeah, this is a viable path. This is a viable career, and it's just a club, right? And now they made so much money, they went to Intuit the other day, because Intuit donated a food truck to the district. $300,000 food truck, you know, it's unbelievably amazing. And now our culinary kids are using that. On Wednesday of last week, they went to Intuit, and they served over 850 people. Their brisket, right? They have a spoon rack, which is a form for a mixture. Brisket, all this fun stuff, candy, Halloween, they're doing the whole thing. And the kids are just blown away to be able to participate and serve. They served all the principal students, which was super fun, and people have been hitting about catering jobs. And we got kids like, oh, how about a ice cream, just do barbecue? Like, no, no, no. But, but it's just, it's that excitement that we're looking to build in all industry centers. So with our new instructional coordinator initiative, that's his focus, right? How do we get kids excited about all these paths? Right? Lots of paths still lead through college. All my surgeons, my teachers, and all my lawyers, they're ready to go to college. That's what you have to do today. But if you don't know what you wanna do, there are tons of other options. What we don't wanna do is just to send kids away to college to have them later drop out and incur a ton of debt, and they have no idea what they wanna do. A lot of the stats that we saw in the Wall Street Journal as of recent are saying that over 50% of the kids that are going to college are saying, I don't know why I'm here. Right? I don't think the skills I'm learning right now are gonna pertain to my particular career, because I didn't know what I wanted to do, right? Our goal is to help kids try to identify what they wanna do as early as possible, and that's a difficult task. I changed my major three times in college, before I landed on education, three times. And I say, asking kids to do it as young adults is even harder, right? So lots of changes coming from Meremesa, both physical, right? And systematic in how we approach kids, but our kids are absolutely amazing. Everyone that comes to visit our school and sees our kids are passing here, and go, wow, there's something special there. Right? Because that's how our kids just carry themselves and interact with our kids. This year has been particularly amazing with how the kids are interacting. So again, super proud of everything that's going on. We got homecoming coming up on August, October 18. If you wanna come and join us, we got some surprises for halftime and all that kind of fun stuff. It's gonna be really exciting. So we're ready for the signing here. If you wanna let you know, I'm gonna throw out my shout out on Instagram, we're gonna have a lot of stuff, right? So the 50th is coming up next year, our 50th anniversary. We're gonna do a fiddle, a huge crazy thing, right? So we're trying to figure out how to get the community in to be able to come in and check out all these things and do all these things. That's what we have big left, we're trying to figure out how to do that. But if anybody wants to help and participate, we are available, I'm sorry.
We will talk about that, that sounds great. My bad, this is amazing. Do you want to prepare your breakfast on the mesa for the Saturday event that's coming up? Maybe this time is Saturday, anybody?
Yeah, the, uh, the football team was last weekend, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I hear the things, I get that Mr. Lockey's hears much, so, yeah. Great, thank you so much, that is good. We have one more speaker who will take us back once again. Change of pace with all part of the Meremesa family, because we have Tammy Peters, who is the Director of Schools and Vice-Supervisor of the candidate. And I'll let you take it away. Alright, well, thank you for having me. Like you said, I'm Tammy Peters and I'm at the school that, um, Christ the Cornerstone candidate. And all the time when I do tours, I say, well, where's the kids going? But they're playing and so on. Very informative for me and I would love to touch your next to a line or not for them so they can go wherever they want to, um, junior candidate, successful. So, um, I did probably get some of our students now. But I know, um, some part of the bridge that's right with that's true. At Challenger. So this is our campus. We have a beautiful campus. We've been in Mary Mason since nineteen seventy-eight, so we've been here, uh, for forty-five years. And, um, we've been, uh, a part of Mary Mason and Mary Mason community for twenty-two years. Mission of our school, I think you can go ahead and skip through. Is and all our families grow with our relationship with our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We're a very family-oriented, um, school. We're very diverse. And, um, uh, our motto is not, is faith, family, and academic excellence. So, uh, we have smaller class sizes. Most of our classes are under ten students. So we are able to hear our curriculum to the needs of the children. Some of our children are very high achievers. I have Mr. Schrader here. We have four children that came for our school. Very, um, high academic children. I know they take up senior gen, but, um, then we also have children that struggle in school. So, because our school is so small, we can hear our curriculum towards them. This year, we were really excited. We got rid of our old computer lab because now everybody has Chromebooks in their classroom. And we started an innovations lab where we're focusing on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So this was one of their first, this is preschool. Uh, this is our preschool program. Uh, I'm thrilled that our public schools have, uh, preschool for three- to four-year-olds, but it hasn't affected private schools, of course. We can't, um, compete with preschool. So, uh, but we do have, um, many opportunities for children to grow. Uh, the whole child through math, science, um, finding those mother skills and becoming successful. So this is our preschool classroom. We have an amazing performing arts program at our school. This is our school and our sanctuary. Mrs. Correll is part of our, um, the Mary Mason community. She's been at Mary Mason her entire life. Her children went to Christ the Cornerstone and then they went to Challenger, Mary Mason High School. Very successful. And this is a picture of our children. We do, uh, what we will, um, be at the Mary Mason Street Fair, performing at stage. We, uh, at Christmas, we go to the Mary Mason Library. We perform there. So we're very proud, uh, of our performing arts program. Uh, last year, we got accredited to the Western Associations of Schools and Colleges, colleges, uh, colleges. And we, uh, went through an extensive evaluation of our school to be accredited by W A S. So we're very proud. We have to go see it. Mary Mason since nineteen seventy-eight. We were able to accomplish being accredited. And I just want to invite everybody to our Harvest Festival in October twenty-eighth. We have fair rides. We have games. We have, um, kids' painting. We have box houses. We barbecue. We sell food. Probably maybe we should hire a number of... Uh, but we'd love for everybody to come out and join us and, um, celebrate, uh, the fall with us. So that's, that's Christ the Cornerstone candidate.
And that's just, and wrapping up the school night, I realize I did skip over one line in the program. Is Christopher Ruiz here, the Chair of the Council? I don't, I didn't actually make contact with him individually. Our associate area superintendent mentioned the cluster council and the principals talked about it in their presentation. And it is a good way to find out what's happening at all your schools in Mary Mason on an ongoing basis. So, thank you all again so much. This is the time of the all-important case of follow-up, but we took the follow-up before they started talking. So if you are free to go home, uh, thank you. And all of you, I think, in the festive hour generally, we do have some other important performances. Very soon, anybody who can say more, come back, like, move up a little bit to the front. So that our wonderful group, the principals, uh, leaving us a little bit of all. But I'm going to hear the prayer. We hope for more of this, and that's the end. And I got the agenda. So that's the... I know there is one. Oh, that's a member here. You have, uh, but... Uh, I can get that to you. But I just ate that and... Michael Spencer. Spencer fireworks. I'm alive.
Well, it's nice to be able to follow people who are doing lots of support work for our, uh, community by saying, hey, give me some money for fireworks. But that's what I'm here to do. Uh, if you are unfamiliar, Screw Free the Fireworks is an organization that does, uh, organize and fundraise for fireworks. We are doing a big push right now. We're calling it Back to the Fourth because, hey, it's the two-hundred-and-fiftyth anniversary of the United States, but at least try. So we're making a big, big donation push right now. Uh, I will say, in just over a month, we've already gained, or, uh, raised twenty-two-hundred dollars to the community, which I will say feels like a record for that duration. So, very good news. And that's for that being really going after businesses. So, fingers crossed that the number we're going for is seventy-five thousand dollars wide. So, um, we don't actually know how much the fireworks are gonna cost. Uh, we're, so we're making a big guess based on what we know from, from these years and what the future seems to look like. But that will hopefully get us, you know, a real goal of getting something that can get us on the Fourth of July. And then that would include the, uh, watch party over at our... You can make donations. We have cards here that have Q R codes. So you can either Q R it yourself or take it and leave it somewhere else. There's also pens. Please feel free to take a pen and accidentally leave it somewhere where a lot of folks are gonna see it. Because these are great fires. Hey, I wanna look at that. But anyway, uh, our biggest thing obviously is getting the word out to folks about fireworks. That has been our hardest thing in the world, is getting the word out that we exist as a fireworks show. That we are run only by volunteers. We only exist by donations and sponsorships. That's the biggest part that we're trying to get out there. And I see lots of folks who know that and it's really important that you share that information with everyone else. We do have a dining out coming up for the end of September. It is the twenty-fourth and it is Panda Express. And this twenty percent comes to us. We can't stand there handing the flyers, but if you go to our website, you can get the flyer and have it on your phone and they will honor it.
And social media.
And all social media, our social media first grant here that they're definitely helping us. So again, thank you so much and so the fireworks show of course.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Jennifer, on to that. My stage is beginning to play. Our October town council meeting will have the main program focused on Independence Day celebration of fireworks. We'll have an update from Strips Mesa Fireworks of how the fundraising goes in the next month, between today, September eighth, and that Monday, October sixth. Because if we need, if we, if we, in order to raise the money that we're needing to go back to the fourth, it has to happen this fall, maybe into January, but really it has to be early on or it's not going to happen. So it has to be early and steady. The other piece of it is there are some others in the community working on the concept of, let's get a parade going again. Even though Mary Mason Community Park is under destruction, there are various routes. Not, not the great big parade we used to have pre-pandemic, right? But there are possibilities for doing this. So we want to bring everyone who's interested in a piece of the celebration. The watch party, the fireworks, other things that might happen. It's different next year because Friday, July third is actually a holiday as well as Saturday, July fourth. Friday is the weekday city holiday. Uh, Saturday is the official Fourth of July holiday. So we need to plan what we're doing. Even Friday will be more expensive. So we really need to push for the fireworks fundraising. Fun stuff. Anybody who'd like to get involved? There is not only that dynamic that's coming up, but the meeting for Strips Mesa Fireworks takes place at Mary Mason Presbyterian Church, six P M. to seven P M., focused on where things are going and some others might be interested. Come on out for that, too.
What's the date of our next meeting? Yeah, so it's on the twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. We've done that. And then prior to all of the talk, we also have an update on Mary Mason Street Fair. Yeah, that's...
I'm gonna make this quick. Um, Mary Mason Street Fair is up for the fourth from May and October. Everyone should come out to it. Um, it does take a lot of work to do this, so if anyone would like to help us, um, please see me. The event planning is going well. There's a lot of enthusiasm this year. We have two stages. Both stages have full, uh, a whole agenda of performers with way less than they send, uh, income. We have more in the high-controlling vendors. The Mary Mason Stronley Association will be there with sort of telescopes. So you can get a, uh, a good view of what's causing all of our sunshine, lots of food, fun zone, playful. So it's gonna be a great event.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we're here. And we do have the Golden Four announced from Sabrina Bosso.
All right, one more time. I want to just, we are putting a different hat on now. Putting on my political candidate hat. Um, again, it's a very positive, a lot of time resident at Mary Mason. And this is the first, very first group I announced when I was running for school award in twenty-one, nineteen. And on that launch in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-four. And I'm excited to share with you all that I'm running for the state senate race in District Forty. Um, so I'm excited, very excited. Brian Jones is currently in that seat and he's gonna be turning out next year. Um, again, very happy long-term resident at Mary Mason. I'm sort of a team president. My kids were at Sandberg Elementary. I was a team president at Challenger when I was there. I was a long time, time Mary Mason High School Foundation president for, for many, many years. Um, and then I was elected to the school board. And my priorities stayed the same, even though it was beyond just Mary Mason, it's the entire district. And that really was to maintain quality public education for our, um, for our communities, our students, our families, to secondly, invasion. And, uh, as you said there, District Forty, this area is huge. It goes from UC, UC Mary Mason, Strats, and then it goes to the city and then it goes off in all areas of East County, Valley Center, beyond. Um, but still, priorities are being the same. We just expand a little bit. So well-funded, high-quality home schools. This is my first time sharing our business, so I'm still, you know, happy to invite, talk to us. Same neighborhoods, our affordable housing and access to quality home care. And just to share a personal note about me, uh, some of you might know, my husband, David Bosso, was a physician at N S C S D for over thirty years. He was diagnosed with, uh, stage four liver cell cell, which is a very aggressive form of brain cancer in February of twenty-three, and he passed away a few months ago. Uh, I just nice to share that because I lived for almost two and a half years being his personal caregiver and I saw so much that was wrong in the system. Um, we spent hours, sometimes days, in, uh, crowded ERs waiting for a room. And, uh, you know, also the cancer centers, just to get an infusion chair, two, three hours, just, just sitting and waiting. And we were in a good place because we actually had insurance. A lot of people that don't, a lot of people that don't live nearby hospitals. I mean, we live in the city, so there are a lot of people, like my husband and, you know, there were similar situations and I think we really need to do better. We need to add our investment in our healthcare infrastructure and further access to primary care, not only here in San Diego City, but throughout East County too as well. Uh, and more support for our caregivers and our families during back to crisis. That was an area, and I had a lot of stories, but it was still extremely difficult. And then finally, I wanted to share, one of the other issues that's really close to my heart is housing affordability. Uh, I have a twenty-eight and a twenty-five or a twenty-six year old, just turned twenty-six. And they can't afford to live in San Diego. And I'm sure a lot of you have similar stories about family members. And, uh, you know, we want to ensure that our future generations can build their lives. Uh, you know, so we can continue to have to do with San Diego with, with young people and young families. Uh, and so San Diego Unified recently took a step in terms of forming a housing authority. And it's in coalition with our community college district. And we're actually building affordable housing on our properties, on school, on, uh, school properties. And so that's something I can really see us expanding, not only here, but in Ramona, uh, Salpi, other parts of the county. So, um, I always believed in grassroots movements. That's how I was elected. Uh, I'm very proud of the campaigns I've run. I've been supported by the Teachers, San Diego Educators Association, which is represented by my house and, uh, through our district. And I ask you for your support by the way, it's at sabrinabosso.com. It's a temporary site. Uh, we'll have a next meeting.
Well, we've got a little bit of regular reports to take care of. We let our regular reports know that our main focus tonight was the school side. So I think we will have some, here are three things to finish up with here. Is, uh, Archie Nanyah, our school community college district board member here. Hello. Don't see Westlander yet, but we'll see. How about, uh, Anna from, uh, she's a guest. Come on.
Hi, everyone. Anna, so I'm Anna, the founder of the East Office. I'm happy to greet, um, the first thing is that we got a chance to talk part of that. We met with the project team and the project team at the city side. They were able to talk us a little bit about the project and I'll just do the space. It's very, since I had, had a privilege of being in the project before, I don't know how big, um, the space actually is. Now without the rent. The good news, the best news out of all of that is that since the season this is, um, at the council and all the parties ended up opening on the front of the door. I know the first one, I mean, I know they did that, it's not much of a difference right now. Um, but it does seem like there are still also being option of, uh, opening to the public dock park a little bit before the rest of the park and they're trying their best and, um, moving over to the, the legal issues. And then for the community part of these two improvements, again, which is held on their website, a Ryan, uh, Weber company, he's, I want to say. But some of the work that they did last month included principal pool and getting up the equipment building. Right now, they are working on the installation of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems and then equipment building, the installation of drywall ceilings, new guy systems, and the exterior painting at the recreation center. Undergoing irrigation and construction of the recently all for the whole way to the process. For Gulf Coast, the latest update was on their website posted on September fourth. It loads up cleaning on Gulf Coast right between Bayou Blaine and Littleton Drive doesn't fit. And construction crews will continue to work along the entire project area. Horse driving, uh, buzz pass and Chappahee and some other areas as well. And then for some of that, and just a reminder that we are, our air show is back this year, December twenty-sixth to December twenty-eighth. And the New York Fire Rescue Foundation, in question with the fire department, will be celebrating the fire prevention this week with a reunion on Sunday, November fifth, from Miami. It seems like it's motivated for kids, it's a friendly friendly event. And it will have fire trials on by the safety and the fire prevention booth. If you have any questions about that, all right, let me know. And then we'll also have a, the fair, so, um, CD, the cast... And then we'll also have a weekend fair, so you can go see me, the council for a part of it, and then the rest of our staff, who's making that. So, yes.
What was the game in the fire prevention?
October Fair.
October.
Yeah, it was something I heard.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
As my comment, I wish you would relay a few of our city councilperson and the mayor. Despite all of the stuff that's happened with San Diego over the years, all the problems we've had, if they put parking meters in Balboa Park, that is stabbing San Diego with our. They've messed up a lot of things, but they have to be Balboa Park alone. That is the last sanctuary we have in San Diego, if the city council is not screwed up. Please tell them, do not put parking meters in there. Unfortunately, this, the people south of our way, we use Balboa Park a lot, but the poorest area in San Diego. We have kids down there, and they go over to the cemetery to play games, because they don't have any recreation centers. They come to Balboa Park because they can walk around the street. You're excluding all the, there's every, our city department, that's all.
Appreciate you. Uh, as well, the policy is like, we're definitely getting some feedback on it, it's still making the special, so I just know, um, vote on it just yet, or the council may have this better on it. Uh, we are working with volunteers and workers of the person that you're out with, it's more of a policy team of the office. But overall, we, we want the rest to have a different, at least here, within the system compared to earlier, so. But, um, I'll definitely relay that. If there's any more questions about that, or different policy discussions, everybody knows, the council always has to help our guys.
Yes.
I was just going to say, and I'm sure that they're aware, they heard this morning, that they're talking about having parking meters at, yeah, you have to pay for parking at the zoo. And that was one place that, you know, you could go and not have to worry about it, and get the parking. And they just announced that this morning. So that would just be a shame. So, yeah, you know, leave that message.
Well said. Thank you very much. Okay, um, let's see. Mayor Frank Lohr is in McInnes County, here in your office. How about Omar, who is Sosa, and supervisor, uh, Carol Lawson.
Hi, good. I'm glad you're here, everyone. I'm going to try to pick a brief as well. Uh, so one of the updates, I have a pretty major concern in the update on our VP of Public Research. Uh, we're looking forward to the writers meeting, uh, Chair Carol Lawson, we were sharing about the, uh, you guys are making regarding with the VP of Health Transformation that's going on. Uh, it's pretty good how we respond to general visitation and homelessness. Um, in March, uh, Caroline said, who was still in United States history, uh, she immediately developed a capacity for 2030, so we hope to get help toward under the national health or a national district. Basically, it's a, uh, care for crisis model. Uh, so this involves, uh, residential greenback capacity, expanding around the 2,000 slots since March. Uh, now it's all 6,966. Uh, so we're already 79% up to our 2030 goal, and we're still kind of far away from 2030, so we hope to see that expand anymore. Uh, we also have allocation treatment, growing faster number with funding secure for 2,000 plus new slots over the next three years, who crop a lot of money, uh, with the county Flag Board, marketing logistics expansion, uh, San Diego history, and, uh, health connected to recovery is also increasing with more than 3,100 people, uh, places here, and 6 million committed for 121% in 40%. Uh, so that's that update. Uh, another update is regarding, uh, being launched, uh, the Small Business Movement program, amazing, uh, the bright, uh, that already is known on the community. Uh, so pretty much what the, uh, what this response entails is, uh, a program to educate small businesses who are, uh, or say office, so with office, uh, labor defenders and portions, so everyone has care of, uh, small businesses in case they have crises. We also have a upcoming item on tomorrow's for supervisors needs. Uh, it's pretty much going to be an extension of our immigrant legal debt program. Just give a little background, the immigrant legal debt program provides, uh, legal aid to people who are contained, and this would expand the program to unaccompanied minors who come in, uh, into, uh, San Diego. So to give some background, the federal institution terminated the federal unemployment children program, setting off legal aid for 26,000 children nationwide, including more than 300 in San Diego. And, uh, the perfect work is, items we need to do is to pretty much build a cap and perfectly legalize those, uh, unaccompanied minors in San Diego now. And vote this through tomorrow. Uh, if you'd like to send it up on the comment or, uh, talk about the upcoming item, the board's writing, have a website where we welcome your feedback. And I also want to share that I will also be at the Miramasa Street Fair, uh, November 4th. Very excited to be there with the team. Sorry, I've got a little wander.
That's true. Thank you so much. I, I think you mentioned something about how place should care, and that would be for who and for what.
So it's pretty much, uh, for people who struggle with, uh, like mental health, uh, disorders, or people who also suffer from self-disability. So we've also been expanding, uh, these past years through like our whole crisis response teams, for example. Uh, that is another strategy of like the care for crisis model, where you have like training and cultural sessions going towards, uh, people who are in crisis instead of completely for social.
And first, probably, I agree on homeless population. Well, that, what it's always a great deal on the homeless population?
Yeah, so like, um, someone who's homeless is experiencing these crises, uh, I think they would appreciate a lot of help. And, yeah, there are.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, State Senator Brian Jones, Mark is Mark Taker here. And then, uh, State Senator Chris Moore, Michael Lavo. Congresswoman Sarah Jacobs, we got the email from the lobby group, which can't make it tonight, but hopes to be there next month. And that brings us to Miramasa Community Center, Jeff Stevens.
All right, so the next meeting, we approved two projects in Miramasa. First one was to convert two industrial buildings to business condominiums. The second one, uh, was an initiation of community planning, uh, so across like the corner of Orange Canyon Road, the Pacific Heights. You can work from industrial to mixed use. That will allow 290 units to be ready. I'd rather definitely be decided to go that way. So that's just the initiation, so we'll be seeing for that as, as we pursue it, and it's to find that. Uh, but we approved the initiation. So the next meeting is the week of today, here in this library. Questions?
Thank you. Moving along to the next one, it is gorgeous community representation.
Wherever our meeting's, Martin, it's Southern, Lopez Ridge. If you want to find out what's going on in the pool, go to sandiego.gov/miramasasp. It's got beautiful pictures on it.
Miramasa.gov slash what?
Slash, see, no, sandiego.gov.
Slash what?
Slash Miramasa.
San Diego dot, uh, slash Miramasa. Okay, thank you. Uh, Miramasa Library, it's past library hours now, but his library has lots of announcements on the back table. So as we leave, you might take a look, there's a Bollywood dancing class, Cory Delles coming up, various things for kids, and, um, and, uh, there's always something good happening here. I'll just add on about what Plan B group did. Did you mention the approval of the recommendation, the Les Ron Trail? You were, okay, I, I had thought of major proposal after the language, wrote on the capital, was King's Canyon, Reserve Citizens Advisory Day, of which I remember, uh, we recommended, Plan B group unanimously approved its recommendation that the trail from Nina Ruiz Park, that was in the King's Canyon, began in honor of Les Ron, B.R.A.U.N.D., wonderful naturalist, uh, knew everything about the canyon, recently passed away, that would be a fitting tribute. Les's words are the words describing some of the vegetation and animals on those signs around the edge of Nina Ruiz Park. We led lots of hikes down that trail. I have on the back table a little mini map, and you see this canyon preserve, and you can see where that trail takes off, so, uh, hopefully the science will go up on specific case actions we do now. Uh, let's see, we're almost done. John, there, the other treasurer's report.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. I want to add one, so we have some streets there, uh, 20, 6,000, if we grant, so we most, uh, so far recorded, uh, street. Uh, there's a lot more expensive, expensive, 7,000. So right now, we're starting on here at 83,000, and we're still at 84,000, so it looks pretty good so far. And that's it. Questions?
Thank you very much. And that's definitely membership, our membership vice president, Jacob Britton, is taking a class at Miramar College, so he is unable to attend our meetings, but he's still keeping track of the records. We had a bar negra at the back table helping take memberships earlier, and in fact, we did get a membership renewal from Rachel, thank you for releasing, so, but, well, Rachel, are you still here?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank, thank you for renewing. And if anybody else wants to renew in person tonight, or our other board members can take that from you, or we can do it online anytime. And next month, we'll have a new membership card, because we get a different colored card for each membership year, which is, our membership year goes from, um, July through July for June? I'll just, yeah, July for June, so we're now in a new membership year. And I think that takes us to the end of our business for the evening. Is there anything else, Joe?
Do you guys know how to get a hold of somebody with a cow transfer?
Somebody from California.
We have, we have a median, a median, the Indian Mercy Road, right this side of Highway 15. It looks like hell. I tried to get the, uh, there's a, there is a, it's a lesson, if you could do, but they won't because there stops at Almira. So we need to get a hold of cow transfers between that, because right here, it's through Miramasa, it looks like crap all the time.
So, okay. I don't think you mind us that, median, Mercy Road.
Let's start with the, the near office, and maybe that of the.
Yeah, we, we may not have a direct, uh, like contact, but we do sometimes, they say, state official, um, like their offices, so I don't want to be concerned, so they can take care of it.
Yeah, some, something has to be done, because if not, we're going to run, and they won't like.
Also, a moment, that's not very far from me. Current office, new office for Ashton areas, the town council business member, R.C. Realty is now building that shopping center near the area, so they would probably be interested in watching that. So on that note, thanks for that further action, and, uh, we'll go ahead and end tonight's meeting. If anybody wants to grab some cookies or water on the way out, chat and enjoy. Thank you for coming tonight.